Good afternoon, everyone. My name is D2 Kasui, and I would like to welcome you to a special session of Urban Financial Services Coalition's "Who's Hiring Now?", featuring Fifth Third Bank. If you remember, a few weeks ago, we had Mr. Kalai Gibson, Executive Vice President with Fifth Third Bank, and strong support of Urban Financial Services Coalition come on. And as a part of that call, we also indicated that we would continue the conversation by talking about job opportunities that were available with Fifth Third Bank. Fifth Third Bank is committed to making a difference, not only for their employees, but they're committed to making a difference through the communities that they serve. And what better way to serve a community than to offer job opportunities? Job opportunities is a way for people to credentialize themselves. It's a way for people to add to their, support their family, and to make a difference in the community. And we have today three amazing professionals who will talk about Fifth Third and who are prepared to answer any questions that you may have about Fifth Third Bank. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to my new friend from Fifth Third Bank, Allison Simon.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So, good afternoon, everybody. My name's Allison Simon, and I am a Talent Acquisition Manager at Fifth Third Bank. I've been with the company actually for 15 years this month. And within Talent Acquisition, I've been in that area for 10 years. And currently, I am the Talent Acquisition Manager for our mortgage line of business. So today, what we were hoping to do is introduce you to some of our leaders in Richmond, as well as go through an overview of Fifth Third, which I don't know if you had got part of that when Kalai spoke previously, but we'll go through that, look at where we're located, what drives us as a company, highlight some of the benefits as an employee, and tell you how to apply for any roles that you could be interested in. So as far as Richmond is concerned, Fifth Third's mortgage business started in Richmond in 2017. Definitely attracted to the area because of what that market could offer and the talent that's there. And leading the site today are Bernita Elson, and if you want to go to the next slide, sorry. So Bernita and then Danielle Ingram. And I'll go ahead and read their bios so you can learn a little bit more about them, but they will also be speaking later as well. So Bernita joined Fifth Third in January 2018 as a Direct Mortgage Loan Officer. And in that role, Bernita maintained top performance in loan production and customer satisfaction. Her knowledge of the business and demonstrated leadership amongst the team helped her to move quickly from an Assistant Direct Sales Manager role to the role that she holds today, which is the Direct Sales Manager and Richmond Site Leader. And prior to Fifth Third, Bernita has over 28 years of experience in the mortgage industry, having also worked in mortgage operations and default. And throughout her career, she's maintained a track record of building successful teams, creating engaging environments, and delivering results. So we're happy to have Bernita on the team in our direct space. I don't know if you want to say hi, Bernita.
Hello. Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, hi.
All right.
Thank you, guys, for attending. It's a pleasure to meet you all. Like Allison says, she gave my bio. I've been in the business for a while. Fifth Third is a great company to work for. I have enjoyed it since the time that I've been here. Moved up pretty quickly within the two and a half years. And right now, in my area, we are looking for managers as well as MLOs. So with that in mind, any questions that you may have, please feel free to shout out. I'm not on LinkedIn. I'm not a social media type person or anything like that, but my information will be readily available to you. Like I said, Fifth Third is one of the better companies that I've enjoyed working for for the small, at the time that I've been here. My benefits are great. We do have a program as well where you can earn, like we have a 360 program that you can actually join for your workout regimens, as well as going to the doctors. You would get paid in your check just for doing this, just taking steps, just exercising. And one thing I do like about Fifth Third as well, we're all about family and work-life balance. We try to make sure that everyone is there for their family, especially in this time. And being able to have that open, honest relationship with your manager. And just always prepared to help each and every one with career development. So whatever you have going in the next phase or next stage in life, I'm here for you, as well as all our leadership. And they recognize success so often. So if you're thinking about Fifth Third, it's a place to come and join. And we'll be more than glad to help you with any opportunity that you may have, whether it's in Virginia or any other states that deals with Fifth Third. So thank you.
Thanks, Bernita. And then Danielle Ingram is also our Mortgage Processing Manager in the area. And Danielle joined Fifth Third in December 2019. She's currently the Processing Manager for our Richmond Processing Site, which actually has an opening here in a couple weeks. She's very excited about that. And she's been in banking since 2005. And started her career in customer service and has held many positions on her path to becoming a manager in the mortgage department. She's got extensive experience in loss mitigation, as a quality analyst, and in metric testing. And she enjoys her role as a manager in assisting her employees today. So Danielle, I don't know if you just want to give a hi and I can have you talk later, or however you want to do it.
Okay, I'll just go ahead and do it now. So hi, guys. Yes, I am the Processing Manager here. Like she stated, I did start in December of 2019. And what I can say about Fifth Third, this is one of the best choices that I've ever made. Here at Fifth Third, not only do they care about us as individuals, we're not just a number or a E-number that we have. What we are, we are employees, and they do care about us all across the board. They value us and they stand with us. They make sure that we have the tools that we need to succeed and that we do succeed. We partner very well. Starting out here, I first met, actually met Bernita, and you would think that we've known each other for years, the way that we all work hand-in-hand and we become one team. We went from being one team to one big family, her office and my office as well. If you're ever looking for a place that's going to help you grow, give you the knowledge and the tools that you need to succeed, Fifth Third is where you need to come to be, and this will be your last stop. I'm not saying that just because I'm here, I'm saying it because it's the truth. I love working with Sheri, I love working with Allison. We all come together for one common goal, which is to make sure that we are improving and moving what they have for us here at Fifth Third. For them, placing Fifth Third in Richmond is something that is going to dominate across the board, and they're doing a great job with it. We do have openings that are coming up, and we do have a hiring event that we have open interviews on October 7th and the 8th. On the 7th, the timeframe is from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., and then on October 8th is from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. If you reach out to Sheri, she is on LinkedIn as well, and myself, I'm on LinkedIn as well. And it's Allison as well. If you reach out, so the three of us, I can forward you to the, get you over to Sheri, or you could just reach out to Sheri or Allison, and we can go ahead and get the ball rolling. That's all that I have.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And we'll kind of go through that again towards the end as well. So if you don't mind going to the next slide. All right, thanks. So what you're looking at here is, just gives you an idea of where we are as far as territory is concerned. And if you are looking at the numbers, some of this is a little bit outdated, so I apologize. But I'm kind of glad it is because I can give you some updated numbers that'll really kind of show you how we've grown over the years. So as far as where we're at territory-wise, as you can see, it's mainly Midwest. We do have some offices up the East Coast and then out West as well. But the main concentration of our financial centers and operations are in the Midwest. And right now, as of June 30th, the bank had $405 billion in assets under care, of which it managed $49 billion for individuals, corporations, and not-for-profit organizations. And I believe, and I apologize because I can't totally read that slide, but I want to say in 2017, that number was $323 billion in assets. So obviously, definitely growing since that time. Next slide, please. Okay, so what you see here is our Fifth Third compass. And we're really led by our compass that helps guide our actions that we take and then the interactions that we have with other people, which is led by our vision, and I'll just read that verbatim. So our vision is personal. It's about showing our customers that we provide something different, something of value. Every single day, every one of us creates connections that build value and trust. And at the center of all that, as you can see, is the customer. And any interaction that we have, it goes around what core values we have. So integrity, being respectful and inclusive, taking accountability for things, and then working as one bank, as Danielle mentioned a minute ago. And then actions, that's how we provide value. What actions are we taking? How can we build a stronger community? How can we provide better solutions? Driving operational excellence, and of course, looking at risk along the way. And in this ever-changing environment, we also, we see today, we're always looking at how to evolve and how we can meet our customers' needs. And of course, that kind of translates into looking at better solutions. Next slide, please. So one of those ways is really looking at the innovation that we have. So maintaining a focus on innovation is key to help us deliver solutions to our customers and also meet their financial goals. So again, that kind of means looking at how banking has been done or looking at issues that maybe people have and looking at how we can do that better. And so one example, student loan debt is something that people have. It impacts probably millions of people. So three years ago, Fifth Third came out with the Momentum app, which rounds purchases to help people pay down their student loan debt. And as of, I want to say it was a couple weeks ago, in that three years, we've helped people pay down $5 million of debt, which is amazing. So this is putting tools in people's hands. So Doughbox, another app that we have to assist people, just thinking of ways to make it easier for people and their financials. And we also look at different fintech partnerships that we can work with, as you can see on the screen there, again, just around helping people manage their finances. Next slide, please. All right, so sustainability for Fifth Third and customer. I mean, we're looking at, as far as customers are concerned and the environment that we all live and work in, how can we take part in that? How can we make things better for the future? And that's something that Fifth Third has pledged to do. So I don't know if you can read the five things there, but we're looking to reduce energy use by 25%, reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 25%, which we achieved a couple years ago, reducing landfill waste by 20%, reducing water usage by 20%, and then that 100% renewable power, which we did achieve last year as well. So all of those things, while we have achieved a couple already, looking to have those all done by 2022. It's important, obviously, that we take part in those things as far as the environment and the communities that we live in and serve. Next slide, please. Okay, so why look at Fifth Third? We look from an employee perspective. Why do people want to work here and why do they want to stay working here? And I think a lot of it has to do with the culture and growth mindset that we have. And in my personal experience, kind of like I mentioned, I'll be here 15 years this month. I started in the call center as a customer service professional. But that's not like the end of the road, right? You come in, you know you can do more. You're performing in your job, you're talking to your managers about what you want to do, and you're going to get support. And that was no different from when I was in that operation space to Human Resources. You're still going to get that support from your managers. And a lot of times, because my story isn't as any different really than a lot of people's stories here, kind of growing up with the bank, so to say, and learning and getting those growth opportunities. You've got people that will support you. And that's whether you're at the beginning of your career and you come in through one of our university relations programs and do the leadership program that we have here, where you do rotational stays in different departments and come out into a manager role. Or it's mid-career and you want to get a certification, maybe in project management, or since we're looking at mortgage, and you're an underwriter, do you want to get your DE certification? Those are things that the bank will support you doing, and that's been great. I've been able to get my Six Sigma license, or certification, I should say, as well as my PHR designation here. So really do surround the employees and look at what they're looking to do and support them in doing that, which is great. Really having that growth mindset and being open to learning and understanding people is very important in having an inclusive work environment. Every employee and customer should feel valued, respected, and understood. And Fifth Third really works to promote inclusion and diversity, both internally and externally. So from educating employees on unconscious bias to recently announcing, we join the HBCU's Partnership Challenge. And I'm not sure if everybody is familiar with that challenge, but it's initiative to strengthen public and private investments in HBCUs to ensure their future sustainability, increase career prospects for their students, and advancing diversity inclusion. Next slide, please. All right. Now, besides looking at that, we also have internal business resource groups, as we call them, which are groups that are made up of employees and allies who are focused on employee development, community involvement, and business innovation. And besides that, it's really, I kind of describe it as a great, huge network. You're networking with people within the bank, which can get you access to different leaders. It can get you different experience if you are leading a group or co-chairing a business resource group. But it's really about learning from other people, learning about different cultures. And on the screen, if you see the presentation, it will list out all the different business resource groups that we have. But it's just a great way to learn about others, to teach the other staff about things as well. I think there's huge opportunities with our business resource groups, and we also reach out to different community organizations as well. And I see a techno, that's totally fine. So I think maybe you get this presentation afterwards, so sorry if you can't see what I'm talking about. But at any rate, I have worked with our Military Business Resource Group for several years. And just to kind of give examples of some of the things, we'll go out and work with different groups like the Blue Star Moms and help them send care packages. We'll go through and do, which I'll speak to on the next slide, our Empower You course and teach military veterans and their families about how to manage finances. So there's a lot of different things that we do. One of the other things that we've done, just to educate other staff at the bank, is holding what we call kind of a military museum and had a group bring in different artifacts. So the groups or the business resource groups are a huge part of what we do, and everybody can get involved with them, which is great. All right, so I know you can't see, but the next slide kind of goes through our community commitments that we have and what we've done in the community, which is there's so many things that we have. And I really encourage you to kind of go through on LinkedIn or on our website and look at all the organizations, because it's too many to name. But some of the things that we do just as programs within Fifth Third, I mentioned the Empower You program, and that goes through and can teach individuals around how to use their finances. What is credit? How do I protect myself from fraud? All those kinds of things, so lots of different things there. And we also teach younger kids in school about finances. And then also have what we call an e-bus for financial empowerment, where we'll go into different communities and bring different community support systems together so people can kind of, I kind of want to say like a one-stop shop where people can get help. I mean, we'll even talk employment when we have those events as well. So lots of things going on in the communities. You can go to the next slide. Okay, so these are different areas currently where we will have positions. So in our branches, which in Richmond, while we don't have any branches right now, I guess you never know as we keep expanding. But so we've got branch-making jobs, commercial, consumer lending, which is mainly what we have in the Richmond area, our wealth and asset management, technology, and then different corporate positions. Now, while on the ground and the buildings that we have there, like I said, are geared towards consumer lending, so many positions now with what's going on are turning virtual. So that doesn't mean, well, obviously, the branch one may not be possible, but in other areas, if that's where you want to work, that is a possibility. I would just recommend looking at the job posting and seeing if it's a virtual position. But more and more positions that we have are going that direction. Next slide, please. Okay, so this, oh, just takes a look at some of the benefits. You can go online to read some more about it, but we really do have a robust benefit plan. So of course, medical, dental, vision, some other standard benefits like life insurance. We do have employee banking, things along those lines. But we also have a really good 401K program. So we will match $1.50 per dollar for the first 2%, and then dollar for dollar for the next 4%. So really, you're putting in six, Fifth Third's going to give you 7% on your 401K, and you're completely vested after six months. So just a really good 401K plan to look at. Not to mention, I think as Bernita mentioned, just very family-friendly benefits that we offer. Paid parental leave, adoption assistance. And we've also rolled out maternity concierge program over the last several years, which helps anybody if you're expecting a child, whether that helps getting prepared or throwing a baby shower, or whatever help they may need finding childcare. That service can help with that. Next slide, please. All right, so as far as applying, if you've heard everything that we've got, this overview of what Fifth Third is, what it's like to work here, we absolutely encourage you to go out to our website and look at what roles are available. And like I said, I would just check to make sure what's virtual, because a lot of things are going that direction. So you can go online and apply at 53.com/careers or join our talent network. Those are all options for doing so, but that is the main option. Or of course, as we said, you can contact one of us too, and we're happy to help and explain anything as well. And then if you don't mind going to the next slide.
You want me to take it over now?
This is just, oh, sure, go ahead.
So the next slide is for here at Richmond. I'm excited. So that's why I asked, can I do it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Virtual thing again, but before I actually go into that slide, I just wanted to touch base on something that Allison talked about. Since I've been here, and I'm one of the newbies out of the three of us that are speaking today, I've seen eight people be promoted since I've been here. And I've been here since December of 2019. That shows you the growth and how Fifth Third stands behind its employees and how they push for us, the excellence that they see. Fifth Third pulls out of us things that we didn't even know we had in us. So I was able to get my Six Sigma as well since I've been here. And again, I started December 2019. So this is a great place to be. With that being said, I am so excited to announce again that we do have the open interviews here. It's October 7th from 12:00 to 5:00. Yes, from 12:00 to 5:00, October 8th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. We will be there, and we're interviewing that day. We have for loan processors, and we have the underwriters that we have the interviews for. Again, you can reach out to Sheri or Allison, and they will get you scheduled and everything. And hopefully, I'll be speaking to some of you guys really soon.
Thanks, Danielle. Any questions?
You're welcome.
Hi, this is Harold. I have a question.
Sure.
Does Fifth Third Bank offer tuition reimbursement?
We do, yep. So it's an annual, and I may just try to remember the amount. I want to say it's $5,250 a year.
Right. Okay, great. And how long do you have to be with the company to receive that benefit?
I'm going to have to look that up. If you give me a minute, I can.
Okay, no problem, no problem. Also, could someone put Sheri's email address in the chat box? As well as Allison, can we have your, okay, I see it now. I see the slide. Okay. And Allison, can we have your email address as well, once you get a moment?
Yeah, sure, no problem.
Thank you. And I have another question as well. Where is your processing center located in Richmond?
Great question. Our new center is actually opening on Monday. I'm so excited. We have all, it's actually opening on Monday. We will be in our permanent home. It's 2810 North Pam Road.
2810. 18 North Pam.
North Pam Road.
Okay, okay, that's not far from where I live.
I have one question that's in the chat. Is it a question about experience? If a person is transferring from another career field, are you only interviewing people with mortgage experience?
I mean, right now, and I don't know, Danielle, if you want to feel that, but yes, I mean, that's preferable for mortgage experience. However, kind of like I said, with some things going virtual, maybe there's a different opportunity for people as well. And I would say too, we'd love to talk to you, just because depending on the background, maybe you have some kind of transferable skills, right? That can go into that. So yeah, I mean, I would say we can talk.
Yeah. That's right.
Absolutely. I have another question in the chat, Allison. Is, will these processing positions be virtual or in the office?
So initially, we would love people while they're training to be in the office. After that, I know there is potential for it to be virtual. But more than likely, a lot of times, it's like two to three days in the office and then kind of a split. But again, initially, just through training, we do like people to be in the office for that, which with the new office, easily social distance, we can easily do that.
Allison, this is the effort. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Question for you, what are the hours of operation?
Danielle, I don't know if you want to, for the processor or just for any of them? Or?
For the processor roles here in Richmond.
Right now, it's 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Right now, it's 8 a.m. to 5 p.m., Monday through Friday.
What, no weekends?
No weekend.
I know, that's right.
Now, of course, we know with mortgages that this could change.
Yes.
It's definitely busy, yes.
At the beginning, when you first start out and you have your training and everything, that's Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. Once your pipeline grows, then we have that conversation then. But once our team gets bigger, we can start to stagger the schedule for time. But right now, we're doing 8 to 5 and you will always have your manager in the office with you at that time. So if you have any questions and we can be reached via jabber, phone call, or you walk to the office and knock on the door and I'll come out and help. We're, we're here to assist. But in the beginning, I, I do say 8 to 5 for the business need.
Okay, and additional question is, as far as the pipelines for processors, what's the average size for a new hire?
For a new hire? So right now for the new hires, the average size, I would say for regular processing is 40 in your pipeline. But right now, we do have bigger sized pipelines. But depending on what you're, where you're at with processing, it'll determine how, how your pipeline goes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But I don't out, in the beginning, I'm not just going to give you 40 loans. We're going to gradually build up to that. It's not like you finish training and you get out there on the floor and here's 40 loans. No, it's not like that. We go through them. I still, we each one of the people on my staff when they're new and I review their, their loans with them from beginning to end. I see if they're, where the era of their strength is and where you might have a little weakness or where we can work on and get you extra training. I'm not going to release you until I know exactly that you are here and give you the tools you need to succeed.
And how's the training program set up? How many weeks in training?
So the first week is virtual with our trainers because our trainers, they're called floor coaches, that fulfillment coaches. They're actually in Cincinnati, Chicago, Grand Rapids. Yes, we don't have one here in Richmond as of yet, but we're, we're continually growing. So you do that virtually and they go through everything. And then I, I hand you a book and we go through the book. Then the next week you come in and you will meet with me. That's how it is as of right now. It could be changed where you actually would be the first week there in the office with me as well. Because like she said, we have enough space that we can social distance and any questions that you have. But your trainer that does your first week, that will be virtual. And then your second week, you're sitting with me and I'm giving you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, that's second, that second week you actually sit with me in the office and then I go through any loans or anything that you have that second week. That Friday of your second week, I will assign you one loan. That Monday, I'm going to let you go review that loan, write down all your questions. I will meet with each processor that Monday individually in a time slot and we're going to review your whole loan to see where we're at. And then we just keep building from there. Any questions or anything that you have, we take a step back. I also assign, they're called buddies, where you'll have a buddy in the office. Then you'll also have a buddy that might be at a different site. So you'll always have a person that you can reach out to in case that I'm in a meeting and you need assistance to move through that file.
Hi Danielle, this is Harold. I'm, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Okay. When would the training start? Do you have a training class scheduled? Because it sounds like you all, you have plans for this Richmond market.
Yes.
Since you have positions open, like you have already have a start date?
For the next training class?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I don't have that in front of me. Sherry, Allison, do you have that up?
I want to say we were targeting the 19, oh, go ahead.
We're targeting on November 9th.
Okay.
Okay.
That would be the start of training, of a start date.
It sounded like that, that you were, you were prepared, you well, well planned and prepared.
Yes, sir. I just had to start it, so yes.
Okay, okay. Now, I, I did look at your website and I saw some processing positions open. Because I, I've been in the mortgage, well, I was in the mortgage business for several years. And I saw some, so the jobs that are open, they're actually open positions, if you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
They're just not sitting out there.
No, they are, they are actually open positions. They're not just sitting out there. They are true open positions. I understand what you're asking.
Okay, great, great, great. Okay, that's great. And I, I want to mention this because this is important to me. But I, just from listening to all of you, it sounds like that Fifth Third Bank has a strong culture that is surrounded with diversity and inclusion. I mean, true diversity and inclusion, not just, not just lip service.
It's true.
Yeah.
They, they.
Because I, I can tell just by listening to Bernita and Allison, that this is a true culture of diversity and inclusion. Because you can have diversity, of course, by hiring all cultures, but then you can have these little pockets within the organization where people feel like they're not included. And then of course, you know, then we have the problem with organizations with microaggressions and, and, and what have you. And and nothing, and that not being addressed, that being overlooked. And that's something that's important to me in, in my next career journey.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I wouldn't say, you know, we're not perfect, right? But we're continually doing things, ways to educate people, how do we improve? And I think having that, that, you know, mindset of education and moving, moving forward with things like that is important, so.
Absolutely. And then I, I would just add, from Urban Financial Services Coalition perspective, we have several members who are also employees of Fifth Third Bank. And they have done extremely well. Like I did mention at the beginning of the call, Kali Gibson, who's a strong UFSC supporter, you know, not that everybody who gets started and is a member of UFSC will become executive vice president. But, you know, you can, you can tell a tree by his fruit. And so Fifth Third has produced really good fruit. And it's also evidenced by the, by the young people who are on the call representing the organization and speaking on behalf of the organization. So I can't personally vouch, but I know members who can personally vouch and would be happy to give you, connect you if you want to have some additional conversations over.
Absolutely, absolutely. And Allison, when, when you, I don't know if you had the chance to find out when a new employee qualifies for tuition?
I did, I found it.
Oh, you did? Okay, okay.
I did, yep. It's 90 days, so three months after.
That is phenomenal, because with some companies, it's a year.
Yep.
You know, and but 90 days, I mean, you just really, wow, that, that's great. That is great.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
My name is Felicia.
Yes, go ahead Felicia.
Hi, my name is Felicia Buckingham. I am a member of U.S. Urban Financial Services Coalition. And I currently work in a finance, with the financial institution. But my question is, what type of mortgage loans do you, you guys handle? Is it residential? Is it commercial?
It's residential.
So I would be interested in learning about residential. I've been in commercial real estate for 15 years. I've been in banking for almost 20 years now. So this is something that interests me. Thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We have another question that's from, in reference to opportunities. So the mortgage loan processor and a mortgage loan underwriter, those two positions are only available here in Richmond? Or do you have these positions available in other locations? These type of positions?
Yeah, yeah, they are, they are open in other locations. Our underwriter staff are, it's a fully remote position. So really, somebody could sit anywhere. And then the processor positions, you know, that's in Richmond. But also we have some open in Chicago, Grand Rapids, Michigan, and then in Cincinnati as well.
Excellent. I, I got another question in here. Another question is, for the, this is for Bernita. What were the key strategies that helped you to accelerate to the manager position so quickly?
Well, I had always been in management anyway. So when I came in, I just wanted to come in as a normal MLO, just do the basic, just work on sales and just leave that management duties alone. But I guess they saw the potentials that I was exhibiting and felt the need that that's not for me at MLO, that I need to go to the next level. So that's when they offered me the assistant position at the year. So I actually stayed there, enjoyed it, which I was still like a producing sales manager at that point as an assistant manager. So then I was doing well at that as well as, you know, always been a top producer, performer, however you want to lay it out. And then all of a sudden, I got the new position of a site leader, which is I'm in charge of the direct sales, the whole team. I manage like 18 people now. So right now, I'm also looking for an assistant manager, which will be assistant sales manager, the role that I used to have. So I'm looking for someone to fill that as well as sales reps, MLO, loan officers. So if you know anything about, you know, mortgages, sales of mortgages and how to just handle sales with customers to put them in the right product, call me. And I'd be more than glad to, you know, update you on what I'm looking for and as well as Sherry and Allison, because they great at giving you the descriptions of positions that I have available as well. And I'm freely open to speak to anyone about anything that you need to know about mortgage and, you know, the next step to, you know, move forward. Like I say, your opportunity is here. All you got to do is present yourself, do what's required of you. And if we see the potentials in you, I mean, you go on to the next level.
Absolutely, absolutely. Great answer. Got two more other questions. Other question is, you know, what is the process after a person attends your hiring event next week? What would be the process after attending the hiring event?
So, you know, Sherry will get in touch. So she will go ahead and have a conversation with somebody. And typically we'll have an interview. And then after that, Sherry or George, who is an additional talent acquisition consultant that we have working, would reach out to that person and talk them through any next step. So it's a pretty quick process, I guess, if you want to say.
Absolutely, okay, great. The, another question in the chat is, is will, would Bernita be a part of the interview process?
I mean, if there's somebody that, that shows interest in one of the roles that Bernita has, and this is virtual too, I guess I do want to, you know, point that out first.
Yes.
Absolutely. That was one of the questions also.
Okay.
Is, you know, what are the protocols for the interview process? So virtual, will, will meet those protocols?
Correct.
Great. And then the other question is, what is Fifth Third's plans for the Richmond market? In terms of footprint and business?
I think that's a great question. So we're just now, as Danielle mentioned, opening this other site, site. And we're planning on hiring a substantial amount of individuals to staff it. So I think, you know, once we get past that, I, I don't know what the plans are necessarily. But, you know, we wouldn't be expanding in the market if we didn't want to stay in the market, right? So maybe other things, I just don't know what that looks like at this time.
Okay, great. I got another question. Is there any plans that you could share about the DC Northern Virginia market space?
I, I don't know if I have any information to answer that either. I think we're always looking to expand. I know, you know, currently we're also looking at southeast. We just recently opened some financial centers in South Carolina where we didn't have some previously. Right now, I mean, besides looking at people working virtually, as we continue to expand that, you know, as far as like, you know, actual physical offices, you know, I unfortunately wouldn't know any plans around that yet. But as we expand virtual work, I mean, absolutely, we can take a look at, at any area, really.
Yeah, I think right now, I think right now, our focus is more so on the Richmond area. Because we have two, we have about three sites right now, with the one Danielle has coming up. And I have one, and then we have another site downtown. So I'll go right now is to actually just focus on filling those sites. And once we get that done, get Richmond built up, we are looking at, you know, expand. And the expansion is widely open, so maybe North Carolina, South Carolina, down, down south. We haven't touched one going north yet. But like, like Allison was saying, the opportunity is always there. Because we didn't think Richmond was actually going to expand to be this big. But when we came about in 2017, we saw opportunities that, you know, the job market here and, you know, with the ops, operation that we have built up here now, that we need to like just bring Richmond wide open for all opportunities. So I think the next step, when we meet with, you know, senior leadership as far as, you know, driving the business, building the business, we may, you know, go a little bit further up north. I think it would start probably like maybe Northern Virginia, DC, because we don't do loans in the state of DC. So wherever Virginia is, Virginia, and we don't even do Maryland for right now. And that's just DC and Maryland is not on our radar right now. We used to do Maryland, but not anymore because of some guidelines in Maryland. But like I said, the opportunity for us is very widespread. So that may be something that somebody's questioning that. You may be in Richmond or you may be, like you say, the virtual part of it. So at least you wouldn't have way if you're thinking about DC or the Northern Virginia area.
Absolutely. I have a question, excuse me, for Bernita, when you're through to?
Go ahead Harold.
Okay, I have Bernita.
Hi.
And your assistant manager position that you're looking for, I do have lots of years of mortgage experiences and that is something that piqued my interest, you know, by you mentioning that. And then this could, this could be an offline question. And if, and if you want to answer this offline, that is, that's perfect.
Okay.
But my question is, is that position salary and commission based or strictly commission based?
Um, both.
Okay. All right.
All right. Great, thank you. Thank you Harold. It's actually 12:55 and I know people have questions. We could probably keep asking them questions all day. So we thank Allison and Danielle and Bernita and Sherry so much for taking time out of their busy schedules to share with all of us. Bernita, we did have a request in the chat. If you would be so kind to provide your, some contact information, that would be great. You're welcome to put that in the chat if you so desire. If not, you can always get in contact with Sherry and Allison. Sherry is at sherry.vanvut, that's V A N V U G T, at fifththird.com. If you want to look for additional positions with Fifth Third, you can go to www.fifththird.com, which is five three dot com. And Urban Financial Services Coalition, we're always committed to connecting individuals, especially minority professionals, with companies that value diversity and the value, value. diverse talent and great places to work. So with that, I'll just thank all of you for joining the call. Please be on the lookout for the UFSC website to get more information about Fifth Third's opportunities next week. And if you have a colleague or friend who is not on the call today, please feel free, we'll send a copy of the PowerPoint to you for you to forward that to them, and we will make the video, this recording available for replay. So with that said, we can all unmute ourselves and say goodbye.